Seven o'clock. So it's seven o'clock and we will call the special meeting for the town of Upper Marlborough order at seven P M.
What's wrong?
Yeah, so I'll stand for the pledge.
To reply, United States public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark Cosen, you're in your room today. We figured out the technology, so if you would do the roll call, please.
We'll do it. President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Lot. Commissioner Finnerware.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Acting Town Administrator Darnell Bond.
Director of Public Works is actually the title.
Alright, yeah.
Director of Public Works, Bond, are you with us? So I know that he is still right now and he did intend to join us, so he may join us.
And Town Coach John Cosen here and Commissioner Lot Engross.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to review of agenda. Can we review the whole agenda?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do one, call the order, special town meeting, seven o'clock. Two, pledge allegiance. Three, roll call. Four, review of agenda. Five, closed session summary from September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Six, business, A, general government job description for vote. Seven, adjournment of the special town meeting. Eight, call the order of the board work session at seven fifteen P M. Nine, roll call. Ten, old business, A, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven codification for discussion. B, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, property standards for discussion. C, annexation updates for discussion. D, circuit rider update for discussion. E, church department line proposals for discussion. F, spring grant drive paying proposals for discussion. Eleven, new business, A, election calendar for discussion. B, attorney RFP for discussion. Twelve, administrative update. Thirteen, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. And fourteen, adjournments.
Are there any changes to the agenda? I think that's it or no? Yes. So hearing none, we will move on and I will read the closed session summary for September fifth. On September fifth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh three P M, the board went into closed session at town hall under general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointed employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And we went to closed session to discuss personnel issue. Motion was made by Commissioner Lot and seconded by Commissioner Colbert. All five commissioners were in attendance and along with Michelle Nicholson from our H R firm, All Profit. Everyone was unanimous to go into closed session. No votes or actions were taken and we discussed personnel issues. So we will, oh, there's another review of the agenda, but we're going to, oh, I have an old, sorry, okay. Alright, so we will move on to the order of business on which we are hoping to vote tonight, which is the general government job description. So this is, the H R firm has kind of gone through the job descriptions and made some changes. Mostly they made the change, I think they mostly made changes to the town administrator position. They did advise that, as someone mentioned, that the salaries need to be kind of looked at and considered, but that this is the, this is kind of getting us to a more middle ground. Are there any questions?
Um, I don't have a question. I have a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like, I feel like we didn't have any input on these, um, um, job descriptions. I feel like they were written, so we didn't have any input. And personally, I saw three different versions of the packet come out and after the second one, I just didn't look anymore, the final, so I haven't had time to review.
So I guess, so the job descriptions were written and approved by a previous board, so we all kind of inherited them.
Yeah.
These are changes. We brought them forward at the last meeting, so.
But we.
There's been.
Talked about it, so we said we were gonna.
I'm hoping we can vote on them so that this job description is in place before we are actually in the hiring process. And again.
So are we still keeping those dates because we haven't got any applications?
Well, I haven't seen any.
Right, so okay, that's separate and I'm gonna add T A administrative updates, okay? So to the job descriptions. There's been kind of this space between the last meeting and this meeting to provide comments and changes, so. I guess I'm just.
I mean, I can, okay, so like I said, I haven't had time to review. I don't know if anybody else had time to review or if you can point out what changes were. I feel like they detract, so.
We detract so that you could see the changes.
Yeah, I was, I noticed it is track.
But it's true that I don't think, think Commissioner Finnerware is the only one who voted on all of these job descriptions. Don't think. I may have, but I'm not certain. I'm not certain to say, because I know we added job descriptions after I came on board, but I think there were job descriptions in existence already before I came on board, so.
Do we have to vote on, can we just, okay, maybe vote on the, the more.
More pressing issue.
Yeah, it's the town administrator. Can we vote on that one and then give time to look at the others?
What are, what are all thoughts? I mean, how are you guys doing?
I was gonna say the changes on final.
Okay, so.
What did you, what did you say?
He, he said.
I read through it and I said I was fine with it.
Which one?
All of them. You know, it shows the changes that were made.
I'm not voting on the T A position if you want to move that process forward, if you want to have more time.
That's, that's what I'm saying. The town administrator, I understand why we need to move that one forward, but the rest of them cannot have an opportunity because I really have not.
Thank you. Alright, so they're okay with that, you're okay with that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I understand why. It's more questions. I definitely do, and I don't want to hold this up.
Okay, so that said, because we're voting public, if you have any comment, feel free to come up to the podium. Is anyone online? Can raise your hand if you have, if you're online, you can raise your hand if you'd like to provide. No hands, please. Okay, so I'll ask, is there a motion to approve the town administrator job?
Excuse me. Last time we spoke about this, one of my questions was that he had taken and shifted responsibility from the clerks to the town administrator, which is what we were trying to avoid. When Kyle was Kyle administrator, we were shifting more things towards the town clerk, and he was taking on more responsibility. Now you're shifting them back. I need to know the rationale behind that.
Right, so we've discussed this and that Kyle, and I kind of sat down and shifted responsibilities around with job duties that were actually being performed. And, and also thinking about the town's growth and expansion. We're in, you know, talking about annexation or getting ready to put together an annexation here. And every department has to be ready to take on new staff and put those in the places that are going to help the town move forward and how that's gonna look.
Basically, what you do is town administrator job and put it on steroids. When you have people that can do some of this without changing the, you know, the job description or wouldn't change the job description that they currently have.
So it's just actually taking, it didn't really put it on steroids, I don't think. It's taking the supervisory roles that the town administrator was performing and putting them in the actual job description. The town administrator is gonna have to provide supervision. That was never in that position and it ought to have been. So that's the sort of basic function in there. So a lot of this is a lot, but it also re's like more than it actually is. Right, like.
So, so remember before when we were talking about the, what I thought was that Kyle had, you know, the administrative title, so he was, everyone reported to him. Is that what we did now?
No, this is, so, so the whole kind of concept of all these shifts is how does our government structure have a skeleton that can hold for as we move forward? That's what we, we want to kind of think about. And with our capacity, our budget, our sixty percent non-taxable land, it's not, that, that position that you're talking about, that's like a hundred. Just like not.
So that's a massive, so.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm asking. No, 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 I wasn't complaining. Hold on.
I wasn't complaining.
I wouldn't say you were.
I was asking just to be clear, because I know that we talked about that before. What I thought was that everybody reported to Kyle and then we kind of changed things to make, you know, whatever.
Right.
And, and everybody is now their own department.
Department.
So with that being said, so this new role does not have a supervisory role, is what I'm asking. It does, it does, but it just.
Town administrator supervises general government. Director of Public Works supervises public works. Chief of Police supervises.
Right, I understand that, I understand that.
And some stuff like I'm gonna say, for example, oversees the town's social media, communications, outreach function. That's really like, hey, person who makes, puts together our social media posts, make sure you, that's, that's actually a supervisory
Right, so you made it now so that, what is the salary range for this job description you put?
So this job description isn't necessarily bigger. It's still a similar salary range, but the bottom line is that the town administrator, market competitiveness, we aren't market competitive. That is, like, from the H R firm. I mean, and I can say that from like town administrator, people have offered me that kind of job and it's way more than we can pay.
They only have six hundred people.
People offer you that job at that money? Because that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at, we're a town of six hundred and some people and we are paying way too much in salaries as it is. We are very heavy in salaries. We're over fifty percent of our taxable income. You know, our taxing.
That's pretty standard to pay.
Now, it's not pretty standard. We're, we're a nonprofit. We don't, we don't, we aren't here to make a profit. We're here to serve the people. Now, is it serving the people to spend half of the money that we get in on salaries?
Yeah, because our.
I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here with a zip receiver. I check, how much does a town administrator make in Maryland? What do you think they said?
I think that especially in Prince George's County, you're going one hundred, one twenty, maybe one fifty.
Eighty-one thousand.
That's probably over in Western Maryland, Eastern New York.
That's the highest, according to what I'm reading right here. Like, you want to read one that suits your agenda, which is basically pay everybody a lot of money. We can't afford to do that.
So this is not about my agenda. This is about the town. This is about the increases in salaries and our competitiveness. Now, our residents get, do not get services if we don't have the competent qualified staff to provide them. So, and, and it's just becoming more expensive to recruit, retain employees. It's a fact we're facing and we have to deal with. A town administrator for what our town does. I mean, if we want to cut back on what we do, if we want to stop doing projects and just kind of don't have events, don't do road projects, don't do all this stuff, then sure. But in order to do the things that our residents want, we need people who have the capacity to take that.
But in the same token, we still are just a town of six hundred and sixty people.
A growing.
When our.
So my question would be, how do we fix that? Because where, if you say that, and I agree too with that, but I also agree with, if we don't have a competent staff, how can we get the job done? Because we, you know, so, but at the same token, I don't see where the money is coming from and I don't know how we're gonna maintain, you know, in the coming year. I don't see how that's gonna, how we're gonna effectively be able to maintain, you know, the new salaries, but yet again.
We still have to annex. Okay, we all, I have heard for at least five years now, when we act. That has been a mantra for everything for the last five years.
Well, we just need to make that, we just need to put that at the top of our agenda because if we're paying people more money in hopes of annexing so that they're already in place, then we need to make that a priority. That's all, that's all.
But we want somebody competent to help us move forward and annex more. I mean, with that salary, we're not gonna get someone that's competent to.
You don't, no, eighty-one thousand, you get somebody competent, but I mean, will they be willing to handle all those job responsibilities? Get somebody off the base one thousand dollars, but they would also be.
But that's what I'm, but what I'm saying, well, that's what I'm saying. I said.
But with all the extra job responsibilities, they may be like, hey, I need some money, you know, and I could see that as well. But I could, I could see us growing a person past eighty thousand and to come, but starting them off like so high puts us in a bad place, I think, because we already have, you know, probably what she said about the budget.
I mean, it is, yes, the budget is.
You're the best man.
To pay more for salaries as salaries go up. And I, it's a concern. It's why annexation is a top priority for me and why I have personally been doing so much of it and out there talking to people and convincing people and fixing the annexation that wasn't done properly last time. So, and it is a major priority. There's just a lot to do and a lot of time in between these negotiations and, you know, talking to people. And then we do have some people who are, as you know, in there trying to stop it.
Make it work.
So you know that from the whole stuff going on from last time, so.
Well, I just think that we have, instead of trying to tackle so many things, is my proposal. I propose that we focus more on the annexation and we, you know, all, if it's, have to give you have to responsibilities, that we all do that so that, and then that way, if we all can't be at the same place at the one time, everybody knows what their responsibility is or we alternate, so you don't have to do so much by yourself. And that's the only way I see all of this making sense. We need to, all these, putting more new stuff on the agenda. We need to put a stop to that and focus more on the thing that is most important and get some kind of headway, the annexation, and then maybe we can pick back up some kind of momentum with the other things that we have on the list to do, because that's gonna be the.
I think the struggle with that is choosing to focus entirely on bringing in new residents and not serving our current residents.
No, we still gotta serve them. We still gotta serve them, but I'm talking about adding more new stuff instead of, you know, getting some type of focus. Well, we, we do have a focus, but a, a more narrowed down focus, like, hey, we really need to work on the annexation. If this is gonna work, if it's gonna make sense, because in the coming year, we, we've increased the salary in hopes of the annexation. So if we don't move forward with that, it kind of doesn't make sense that we've done that.
So I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move away from the annexation, so can you come back?
Yeah, yeah.
But with regard to salaries, annexation, no annexation. The services the residents of this town are used to and the challenges of having sixty percent of our land mass un-taxable, but consuming those services requires a higher level. I am working to solve that problem in multiple ways, not just annexation, but it is an uphill battle because of the relationship that I am having to heal.
And we have to show that we're making progress to get more money from the county.
Yes, and, and things are going well. Look, we got a sidewalk.
If we slow down, that's gonna.
Right.
Robot in front of that money.
No, I don't think so, because moving so fast and we haven't completed some things, I think if we slow down, we may can complete some things instead of keep adding stuff.
So I don't want to get the.
But let's go back to this.
Right, we're, I'm a job description, not what's on the agenda. So I think the question is, are we ready to approve this town administrator job description? So is there a motion to approve the town administrator job description? So you've assessed your motion? Okay, and then is there a second? Clark Cosen, would you call the roll for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Finnerware.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, so.
So we're gonna have more time to look at the, well.
The other ones.
For me, I need to look at the.
Yeah, and hopefully we can vote on them on the twenty-sixth.
I'll, I'll have.
That will have to. Okay.
But are we able to, since this is a board decision, are we able to bring, bring our ideas forward so that, you know, it's a.
Right, that's why we always get the packet out. Even sometimes if we're missing pieces, we get it out a week ahead and say, here's what we're missing, but you guys can read, you guys can give your input. So we'll, if you guys reply to us back between Tuesday and Friday, we'll actually change the packet with your information. So that, that's why we send it to public on Friday in case you guys have things to add. So, um, okay, so I guess we have to actually adjourn this meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn the special town meeting?
Almost.
Clark Cosen.
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Finnerware.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Anyone want to take a moment before I call the order of the?
Let's go.
Alright.
Got homework to do.
Okay, so I'm calling to, to order this work session for the town of Upper Marlborough at seven twenty-three P M. Clark Cosen, would you do a roll call for?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye, or here, sorry.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Finnerware.
President. We still have T A.
Oh, yes, we need.
Start now.
Of course, Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Park John Cosen here.
Alright, so we will start with ordinance twenty twenty-three oh seven codification. Clark Cosen, you have an update nobody likes about that.
I do. So ordinance twenty twenty-three oh seven codification, that of course is our code. Muticode, I did finally get some clarification from Lois and the team at Muticode. They are saying that what we need to do is have the board approve the codification as is. Property standards, of course, is being revised right now. The issue is that they are going to go ahead and take, once you guys pass the property standards, property standards will then get updated along with any other ordinances that you might have passed between now and then. So therefore, all the ordinances that we updated. The reason why is because they are thinking that property standards is a big chunk of the codification itself and there's no reason to have a codification if you're going to be doing property standards and updating your property standards. So the idea is to save money. To get another set of proofs is gonna run us like fifteen hundred dollars. So that's out of the question. The town is not gonna pay for that. So the idea is, get the property standards, get all the things done that you need to pass, get them passed, and then we'll update codification and we'll be good to go. That's the plan.
So you're saying, in other words, put them in.
They, we will, you guys will pass the ordinances.
That's what I was gonna say, pass the ordinances and then you just put it in.
Send them to Muticode. They will then go ahead and re-update everything the way it is, and then we will then have our codification ready.
I guess I'm probably gonna ask the same question I asked last time, but I'm trying to figure out where, where the line is snapped on this. Where, if we approve codification at, you know, at September meeting or whatever, everything that's been improved up until that point, that they have to wrangle all the cats to get it together and then, but at what point do they finish or at what?
It's three months to produce it. So you're talking three months after it gets, once you guys pass your property standard, you're running it three months after that to actually get the codification.
And what do we, what if we pass things and that?
Then what happens then is once that, once you're at a breaking point, you have three months, you'll have your codification. Anything you pass between now and then go into a supplement, because it'll be a supplement that then gets issued later on down the road that will contain, let's say, twenty-four, any ordinances in twenty-four, you would have all those ordinances that will then be stockpiled. They then will then issue the first supplement. We did, in our contract, I did check on that, we did ask for supplements. So we will then get supplements as it goes. We will always be able to supplement and add to it as you guys pass the legislature or what the board will be. You'll always be able to update the cod, the code.
Pretty good, thanks.
So I just want to clarify, they do want us to act, because remember, we weren't sure if they wanted us to pass it or not. They do want us to pass it.
Yeah, they want us to get property standards, because as.
Oh, they want us property standards first, before we pass.
Yeah, because Lois said, there's no reason for us to have the codification done if you're changing your property standard, because that makes up the bulk of a lot of your codification is property standards, because people go to the code to look at what the property standards are. And if you're gonna change those now, then it's best to change them, have them added to the new revision, and then you're good to go.
So. I'm just gonna clarify. So we would pass property standards and would we at the same meeting pass the codification or would we have to wait one more meeting?
You can, it's almost like separate entities. So you, the, the ordinance could be passed because all you're saying is that you approve a codification to be performed. That's all this basically is. The other, the document itself is a separate entity. So you've got two separate things up front. You have the codification. The town has, the board of commissioners has to pass an ordinance stating that the codification is approved. That's basically all it is. It's just to say that you're allowing Muticode to produce a code that then becomes standard for the town, that then gets put on the website. So therefore, that's what that is. Standard operating procedure is to have an ordinance stating that you all have approved for the codification to go.
We have a deadline on this.
Right, but they have been gracious to a extent.
Okay, to what?
That's what I'm working with Lois. They, like I said, they want you to pass your property standard. So she said, hopefully you guys can do it sooner rather than later. But I'm working, she's trying to talk to Roger and figure that out. But as soon as I know more, I'm gonna let them know. But I'm looking at towards December is what I'm thinking. It'll be.
That it will be done, but we're gonna pass it on the twenty-sixth. I'm just keeping track of.
Okay.
So are there any other questions about codification that anyone needs answered to be able to pass it at our next meeting?
So the property standards, can we just go over those?
We're gonna come to those next. I just want to make sure we're done with codification before I move on.
So we, so basically, we, we're not doing anything unless we pass the property standards first.
We're gonna pass.
And then, once we pass the property standards, and then we can add to the codification.
So I think what Clark Cosen says, is saying is we're gonna pass the codification, but they're not going to actually do it until they get the property standards.
Oh.
So we can pass this on nine twenty-six, and if we're ready to pass property standards on nine twenty-six, we can. If not, it's okay. They just won't start until October.
I'm clear now.
I'm sorry, and to that point, basically, the longer we go without a, a pass property standards ordinance is the longer that we go without a cod or a code.
That's correct.
So that three month period, it doesn't kick off until we pass property standards.
That's right.
That's correct.
I want to get the property standard, I'm gonna have to run it a little later.
Are we ready to move on to property standards?
Yes, cool.
Okay, move on to property standards. So this draft. Okay, move on to property standards, so, um, this draft is still the draft that was prepared by the town administrator. I have been through and made some updates and changes, and the town attorney is going through and making updates and changes, um, to get it, so that is basically that the standards are the county's standards, but that we have a little more way in letting our residents know that there is a violation without immediately slapping them with fines, um, so it's a little more friendly, like, hey, did you know you can't park your car on the grass, so here's a notification, please move it. Then there's more compliance standards, if they say, I'm gonna keep parking my car in the grass, then, you know, you go to the next step of issuing the letter, starting to issue fines, et cetera, and then there's a function to bring in the county. And it also removes the appeal to the board of commissioners, uh, because that is just, becomes kind of a political thing, and, you know, it, it's, it seemed like it's not exactly the fairest system, um, in the past. So it puts kind of all of the decision-making back onto staff, or, and then if you have a dispute, then it goes to the court, same way you would with the county.
So it, it takes us out of the equation? Why is that? Is that what we want?
I mean, partly because we're not really judges, right? And partly because what I saw happening with the property standards, with the way it was set up, was not exactly fair or equal treatment for everyone. Um, so if you came and you pled your case or argued a certain way, you know, we might say, oh, uh, we're just gonna let that go, and if you didn't show up, then you were gonna just get it, it, it just, it wasn't, didn't feel like a fair system.
But I don't think it's fair either for us to put it back in the county's hands, they have so much control as it is.
This is actually puts that decision in, on the courts.
The courts, but the county, right?
But it's county code, we follow county code.
Code, but then it's going to the court, so a judge has to make this decision.
The judge will make it, if you're not, don't want to, if you don't want to have your property comply with the ordinance, you're gonna have to go to court.
So what happened, I'm not gonna mention the person's name, but what happened when we gave so many tickets or fines out to one particular, um, resident, and they just decided they wasn't gonna pay, so something like that will go then to the courts?
Yes.
So.
Right now.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do, on the corner, Rectory Lane, I'll just say that.
Oh, okay, I think I know who you're talking about.
Right, so if we have something like that happening.
Right.
Um, what, under the, right now, what can we do?
So, so if I.
Start to give them another ticket.
Right, so that, the tickets go on to their property taxes, that's in here right now.
Right, but if they don't wanna pay, because I know that person said that they were not going to pay.
Right, but it's still going on their house's taxes, it's still going, like, it becomes like a lien on your.
Oh, okay.
House, the same way that the county does, and I'm.
Let's see, you'll be against town, you're really against town taxes, right?
Taxes, it's, it's like town taxes, yes. Thank you.
Again, well, then, our enforcement, for town taxes.
Collecting taxes, I think the county actually collects the taxes for us, except that taxes, we get.
It's on the county tax bill.
Right, so we get, um, payments from the county for taxes that are in arrears, so they're doing that collecting for us.
Right, but it's in the enforcement aspect, like you said.
So that's what's in place now?
That's what's in place now, yeah.
Okay, so, okay. Now, it's a big change.
It's more of like, so if we just look over to the county, then if you went on vacation and rained a million times, and your grass got kinda long, and your neighbor called the county, you could wind up with a big fine.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas, we can send someone to knock on your door and be like, hey, we noticed your grass is kinda long, here's your card, and you are gonna say, thanks, I'm gonna get out there and mow it, right, and then it's done, and you don't have a big fine. It's this approach to, it's like a gentler approach, right?
Avoiding HOA.
Right, and we don't need people being slapped with fines every time they have, you say someone has surgery, I, there, there was a, a pair of neighbors on Rectory Lane, where the neighbor had surgery, and other neighbor said, your vines are kinda bad, and she said, I know, I'm gonna have to call a landscaper, 'cause I can't do it myself, the other one said, you know what, I'll come and help you. Like, that kind of conversation doesn't happen with the county, and it's good for community, it's good for the town, um, so, but, but you do need to deal with your, like, you can't not, you can't just mow your grass, and so that's why there's all these enforcement mechanisms that are in place here.
Is the enforcement still going to be complaint-driven?
So, no, once everything's in place, no. Um, a, a big part of the problem is that complaints weren't necessarily.
Addressed.
Well, and it's not necessarily that, there was interference in whether a complaint was addressed or not addressed, so, um, taking all those elected officials out of it, I think is a good move, and then, um, it was, it was just becoming not being done on a, like, administrative, I hate to use the word bureaucratic, bureaucratic, having staff manage this, I think, will address that. Now, if you have a complaint, you can still call in with a complaint, but we have been concerned about the enforceability of this, um, based on some history around it, so that's part of why it's the way it is. So, yes, we would like to be issuing, um, based on visual checks.
Well, that's, that's one of the, when I talk to people on this particular subject, uh, it's a rather good topic, I'm spring break. If it's complaint-driven, nobody wants to complain.
They'll definitely complain.
But most people won't complain, because they don't want to be the bad guy, and that happened right here in, in, you know, one of our meetings, well, I know who that person is, and, you know, uh, that, yeah, that's what they want to avoid. So are we going to actively look in, as our code officer is going through his town, looking at violations?
Our code officer does issue for violations that they see, it's not solely complaint-driven, but due to what Commissioner Lois Laug was kinda talking about, um, and remember, kind of, if two years ago-ish, you said this was unenforceable, and we couldn't enforce it. Um, in this meeting, and then we didn't enforce it, um, and so, plus of all that, it's made it challenging, so we've needed to deal with this so that we can go around and issue violations properly, um, and make sure we have violations that are with the county, like, certain violations, people complain about something, but it's not actually a violation, so having it all under the county will cover a lot.
Sounds like it would be more efficient.
Okay.
Now, has this been approved by the town attorney?
So, um, like I said, this is with the town attorney, so it is going to change, so it's possible we're not gonna be able to pass it at the end of this month, that's why I said it might be October, um, so.
Basically where we wind up, somebody has the attorney, and then we have a attorney.
Right, and he says there's more work to be done, so I just, um, Commissioner Henshaw, did you have any?
No, okay.
Sorry. All right, um, public comments about property standards? Pop up at the podium, or raise your hand if you're online. All right, hearing no comment?
We have one person online.
Sorry. I just wanna, I wanted to ask about property standards, 'cause it impacts everyone more directly, um, so we'll move on, she's just smirking 'cause of a property standard.
Well, let's change that, you guys know, let us get it now. We don't want that, no way.
So we'll, we'll move, um, on to the annexation update, so, um, the annexation agreement we passed last time is being filed with the county, um, we have people, we have a new area that came to us, they are adjacent to where we were going, um, so I told them if they could get the annexation agreement executed in the next two weeks, then we would, um, add them in, but I am getting ready to call the surveyors, um, and that will put, the attorney will start drafting the do, annexation documents.
So did they sign a petition?
Have enough names on there?
And who, what do you mean a petition?
Wait, you said.
Oh, no, this is just one property that's adjacent to our existing.
Oh, this one, okay, okay.
This one property that's adjacent to the, the annexation was due.
Okay.
I'm not, this is just like, uh, this little.
Okay, okay, okay.
Block to what we're already doing, and I had.
Okay, you want to check out where it was, uh?
I was getting ready to call the surveyors, and I was like, we'll give them two weeks, and their lawyer has done municipal work on annexation before, and now it's over on development side, so it should get done quickly. So they, they just sent over something today, so it should be, call the surveyors and get the, start getting the document drafted, um, it's a big draft document, so I don't wanna say that it's gonna be ready next month, because it's huge, I don't know how long that's gonna take. We are still, you know, voters, and we increase our voter agreements for annexation. So I think it's, I just have an old packet, so was there a memo in here?
I don't know.
Oh.
There's a memo, uh, recent.
I went too far. No, I just don't have it, for whatever reason, that's fine, um.
Yeah, go back.
It's fine, but, so basically, the Circuit Rider has two pieces, it has the grant administrator, writer and administrator for us, um, and for the towns of Morningside and Eagle Harbor, their main need is, um, kinda like an office, kind of a town administrator, but not really, more like an office manager, um, so something in between those two, and then that person would also be able to provide some office support to us, and our grant writer would provide, like, grant information and assistance to do that.
So we're splitting this bill with them?
So the bill is putted by the state, so they.
Oh, okay.
What, we were originally going with just Morningside, and it was, it was really hard to find a person, um, because we were awarded only fifty thousand dollars, so we, um, the town of Eagle Harbor has been struggling with their Circuit Rider, and so they asked if they could join, I talked to Administrator Snyder, who was here at the time, and he said, we can get more money like that, so, um, we were awarded seventy thousand dollars this year for the.
So we're, so we're, the, the person will be splitting the duties between this of a Marlboro and.
Right, so it's actually two people, so there's a contract in there for the grant writer that we have been using, she has mostly been evaluating all the grants that I keep throwing at her, but she has also applied for four grants, um, one of them has hit, it hasn't hit us award date, but we, we've been told that we are probably getting that. Um, and then, so we're waiting on the one she submitted, because we haven't gotten to award date, she's working to submit some other grants, so this would extend her contract that would be free here. Um, and, sorry, that's the one piece, and then the other piece is the hiring of this office person. Um, the job description was approved by a previous board from this town, it's been approved by Eagle Harbor, and it's been approved by Morningside, so we're gonna start the hiring process, and the town's contribution to that is in kind of HR services and, uh, like, hosting the jobs, whereas Morningside and Eagle Harbor will put in actual dollars to increase that salary. Uh, so that hiring process is gonna get underway, but right now, we're very focused on our own town administrator, uh, hiring process. So I guess, do you have any questions about?
What is the current salary we're paying the, uh, grant writer there?
The grant writer's salary is in this contract, um, and it's based on hours' work. What I did with mine, unless it got put in a different place? Oh, it is, look, I found it right here.
Five dollars, sir, please.
Thank you.
Two dollars.
This is actually a very good price for a grant writer, and she's doing, she is getting us more, previous grant writer, they were all rejected.
Over sixty dollars per month.
This person is actually getting us funding and, um, getting, able to, this person has, um, experience getting federal grants, which is something we really need, and so she's been evaluating some of those. Great? All right, any questions about all of that?
No.
Okay. All right, then we're gonna move on to Church Street Parking Lot Proposal. Um, Director Bond is with us, but he is not feeling great, so I'm gonna take the lead on introducing it, and he will answer questions or explain things, I do not explain them. Um, so for the first one, it is a Church Street Parking Lot Proposal. That had a lot of elements, it had a laying down of stormwater, uh, laying down of electrical capacity to put in lighting, paving the lot, um, and curb and gutter and landscaping. The bid that came in was well over.
Whoa.
The, the price, um, and if you look, um, at the outline of work, it's really only the paving, so, a, and the electrical work, so agreed, this is more than, 'cause we have a grant for this, and this is more than a grant.
We need to put it back out and get, uh, at least two more bids, we should at least always have three bids.
Right.
I'm also, well, I wanna get more information on where we're actually putting these out to begin with.
Yeah.
And if there's some other, either associations or partnerships that we can try to.
Yeah.
Get a bigger pool of candidates.
Yeah, 'cause I definitely wanna throw some at some of my vendors.
Use a, a contractor, uh, the contractor that we use for Elm Street, when we did, we did Elm Street, and they took that down to ground level, because it was, it had been built up so high, uh, that was CB three, we should probably ask if they will put on either one of these, they were very good.
Director Bond, did you, was that one of the ones you reached out to?
CB three was that.
Um, so, and it is just, we've got it up here, it's on the town website, it was on social media, it was on Constant Contact, and then, um, I had a list of contractors that the county, a county engineer shared with me, and then Director Bond had a list of people that he's worked with, so we sent them to those people as well, but, um.
I'll listen, we'll talk tomorrow.
Right, so it's been on the website, so you can definitely always go and, and send it from the website, um, it closed on the seventh, but I do, I agree, I think with this one specifically, we should rebid it, um, but Director Bond and I had a conversation today about the fact that it has all these different elements, and that possibly all of those, probably all of the elements together are more than the grant we have, but maybe we split this up and say.
You have now.
Well, maybe we have people bid on all three pieces, but if we think about a, like a one-dig policy, right, you're gonna need to dig for stormwater, we're gonna need to dig for, um, lighting, and then.
Those are the permits.
Right, but if we're gonna dig, let's dig once, right, so maybe, maybe all we can do with the grant we have right now is dig and put in the stormwater and the lighting and any other wire we need to put in, and then we have to ask for more money to do the active statement, but let's bid it as kind of those three separate elements, so that, what Director Bond said to me, and correct me if I'm getting you wrong, Darla.
That kinda makes good sense, though.
Is that he thinks people didn't bid on parts of it, because they, it didn't explicitly say they could, so if we explicit, if we.
So we're gonna update, so we're gonna update that?
We're just gonna like, we're just gonna reorganize it and give it, like, topics, and then say. We're just going to like, we're just going to reorganize it and give it like topics and then say, you know, that you can bid on any portion, any portion. Right.
When I was reading, you mentioned that. Warren Biff mentioned that that, you know, that was a, a problematic was the fact that there was so much to this, additional required costs that have not been discovered. Which I'm, I'm sure he's talking stormwater management, since you know that's going to come up. And that he does not address. But he, he did see it. But I think we should rebid it.
Um, Director Bond, did I get everything or do you want to add anything?
Yes, Mayor, and after our conversation earlier, there was one piece that I, I thought about that may be a potential issue for us. Once we put this off for rebid, um, unless we specifically ask, uh, for a longer, uh, sort of, time period for the proposal to be good, um, they are for the most part fifteen to thirty days. If we put, if we put this out and let's say we have the lighting and, um, the electrical lighting, stormwater management done first, that's going to push out the timeframe for the paving, uh, striping and, uh, things of that nature. So it may push us outside of that fifteen to thirty day sort of acceptance window. But what I would do is if we are able to bid, well, to rebid these out and to, uh, get multiple bids, we should, if we have, uh, the allotment, we should add, uh, hefty contingency for what that, uh, what the price does in the interim before the paving.
There should always be a contingency, Director Bond, just to make sure that, you know, if there's extra stuff they need to fix, that they find, they have extra findings, they'll still have enough money to cover them. So we should always have a contingency built in there in the plan.
Most definitely. This budget, there wasn't, uh, enough for the contingency and actually for Spring Branch Drive. With that price, I actually added in our own contingency of ten percent, with actually break, bringing that, uh, out to ten thousand dollars, uh, just for an even amount.
Yeah, we'll get to Spring Branch Drive next, too.
I was going to say, I would also be, I would possibly provision to say, you know, post now, ninety days. It'd be a bit priceable, but it is, you know, it'll at least, you know, give us a greater window to evaluate and possibly try to chunk anything up.
Normally the proposals, they usually do give you a time limit, timeframe. Yeah, nah, that, I've never, yeah, that's true. Not even in my line of work was I accept something that short. But I still need to bring myself to my own to approve, so it's still the same type of process.
So, I guess this is kind of a question since we're talking about the timeframe. Is it completely unrealistic to think, even, even start thinking about paving right now, right? Should we only be bidding out the electrical and stormwater pieces of this? Because we know the amount we have does not cover paving.
But you know what? Sometimes when, if you get a person, a vendor, I should say, on board to do one half, they're, they're willing to work with you with the other half. Not saying that, um, you don't have the money, I'm going to go ahead and do the work. But they're willing to wait and say, "Okay, well, when you get the money, I'll come back." You know what I'm saying? Because they've already worked with you. So a lot of them will do that because they feel like that's guaranteed money. They're not going to turn that away. Yeah, and you're guaranteeing more work for them. So, I mean, whatever is more relevant to do now, we should do.
I'm just wondering, it's, sorry, I, I'm just wondering if people aren't always bidding on these proposals because sometimes we'll put a bid out and then it will be too much and we won't actually move forward with the project.
Well, I'm thinking that's what you mentioned before about, you know, maybe handling the stormwater management, the lighting piece is, you know, first is the way to go. Because, I mean, the lot is, it's, it's not unusable. You can drive, park in the lot, I'm parked over there. But, lighting is an issue, so it's not going to want to park there overnight. And if we're going to do some type of excavating work anyway, to, you know, then maybe we get it to a point where it is more user friendly or more attractive and then we can handle the final paving, ceiling piece at another, that actually does a better benefit.
Break it up. Do what we can do now.
And also, we don't know what's going to happen when they open up the ground to the stormwater.
Well, that's when contingencies come in.
Yeah, that's, that was a big concern, um, from our bidder, it was stormwater management.
So, what I'm, what I'm planning to do is update this description, split it into three, but remove the paving piece for now. But, so, we're getting into, no, you...
I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe you don't remove the paving piece. If we're saying you can bid on all or a piece of this and evaluate what the paving part is coming in.
Anyway, so we could...
Yeah.
Well, but then we said too, with them, whoever we decide to go with, and, and they can do the other portion at another time. And they know it's guaranteed work that I, yeah, when they get some more money next year, perhaps we'll be able to come back and get, they'll be happy to have that as well. So they may leave the, the date for the contract open ending like for a year. So I've, I've had contractors come back and do big projects and say, "Okay, yeah, I'll give you a year on it." Just because they know that they can, they're going to guarantee, that you're going to guarantee them getting the job back.
They also are looking at the fact that if we're doing, we're looking to do things in steps. They know the steps better than we do. You know, so they know that if, I'm, and I, I'm not going to bid on the paving at this time because we're doing the water management with, you know, the, uh, water management.
Stormwater.
Stormwater management. Because that has to be done first. So we, the contractor knows he's not going to pave.
Right, true. So...
See what they're working with after, after that part is done.
I mean, if we're doing it more in steps and saying more in steps, in a step situation, it's not like, "We don't have the money, we aren't going to do, we're just going to do a little at a time." Because those steps will each take time and we will have money down the road. To continue along this line, uh, I mean, somewhere along the line is stormwater management grants that we can apply for, I'm sure.
They're tricky, the stormwater management grants. Because they, we, we've been trying to find one, but they want you to, they're giving you the grant to go above and beyond what's required, to do what's required on your own dime.
Is it possible to get them after the fact?
Usually no.
Yeah, to reduce costs, no.
But this is different because there's a rain garden in it. So, a potential option is after the stormwater stuff is installed for us to pull the green team and some other, like, volunteers in to plant and like do some of the, because the rain garden is, it, it can be done quickly.
Another way to get some more money, right?
So, and there's grant, yes, there's grants for the rain garden specifically. But I just want to make sure it's clear direction that I draw, redraft this for us to approve again because it's changing substantially on the twenty-sixth. So I'm going to split it into three pieces. I'm going to clarify that they can, um, bid on any or all pieces and that we would like the bids to be good for ninety days and that we will be doing the work in phases based on the order of operations.
Only, only, only reason why I'm going to say something is because if we say ninety days and we're not ready to pay...
No, we aren't.
Right, right. So kind of like, doesn't make sense.
But if you state you're doing it in phases...
In phases, then they can understand that. Think better than we say ninety days.
Ninety days. Do more phases on a day.
At least ninety days, that's the least they should get.
Well, when I said ninety days, I wasn't meaning nothing to work with you.
No, 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 the decision, the decision process.
You know, right, is this quote good?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because then we do a con, we drew up a contract, right? And in the contract, in that contract, we put the, the, the date that, you know, we expect the contract to come in and then the date we expect it to be there.
So, this brings up a point. It's that by the time that we approve this and we put it out, it may be into October. So we're actually going to be reviewing it at the November work session. No one's going to start breaking ground. So, so we should still do it. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, like...
Well, they also know that they're not going to be breaking ground in November, so...
They're going to bump up the prices to next year's prices.
But they also mean next year's work that they may not have.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I'm making sure we're all aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, so when we do both, okay, is this in the budget?
It's, so we have a grant, a bond bill, two bond bills for parking improvements. Some of the bond bill money is being spent on like restriping and some parking, um, like meters. Chief, do you remember what all is on that? Parking improvement list that Kyle put together?
Off the top of my head, I think it's parking meter, rip, um, pieces for repairs, um, the meter heads, and I think a couple of printers. Um, we've had several meters that have been run over and they're totally destroyed. So those have to be replaced. And if I'm, off the top of my head, I think it was close to a thousand dollars apiece, if I'm not mistaken. So, I know we've lost at least three or four in the last three months.
Wow. And so, and I think Director Bond, your end is the stripe, getting the restriping done, some signage. I feel like there was also a kiosk in there somewhere. But I'll pull that spreadsheet up. But, so there's some improvements that are happening outside of it.
That is, that is correct, Mayor. I believe the kiosk was to replace the failed one at the Church Street lot once the upgrades were made.
So, so there will be some parking improvements while we still work on it. All right. I'm going to move on to Spring Branch Drive. This also was the only one proposal. Um, it went out to the same group. Here's the thing. This proposal is well under...
Under, I saw it was under, but we still need to get at least one.
So, I guess, my thought on this was given its price. We go into the office tomorrow and re-put it out, put it out on all the things. And if we do not have any other, like, make the closing date, the, what's the Friday before our meeting? Or the Thursday before our meeting, right? The twenty-second or something?
What, this month?
This month. If we make it the twenty-first or the twenty-second, then, and then we don't, or we can make it first, but if we don't have anything by the next time, this price, because again, we're coming up on, I'm not paving the road in the middle of winter.
Okay, this is, uh, I'm just reading this, this was dated, uh, nine seven?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is a fifteen day bid. Only going for fifteen days.
So I talked to him today, I talked to this man today and he said everything's still what it is.
Well, today it is, but...
Right, so she talked to him, so, well...
What can you get from him, you know?
Right, so this was, we were never going to approve this until the twenty-sixth anyway. So, yes, I, I, you know, Director Bond, I can call him tomorrow and, and check the validity, um...
If we're going to do that, I would like to see CB3 contacted as well to see if they have. We have a second quote.
So we'll pump them, well, not, we'll only pump this one back out into the cycle.
And the other one you're going to update?
I'll update, because we have, because we're substantially changing it, we really ought to vote on it. So, I'm just going to update it. And then, but this one, to get any proposals in, we really could let it be till like the twenty-fifth. I know that doesn't give, you know, maybe we have to look at it in more detail at the actual meeting if it comes in that late, but...
As long as we're comparing apples to apples, it should be all right.
Yeah, I think, given that the price is much more reasonable, especially based on what our contractor quoted and, um, Director Bond felt it was a good reasonable price and all of that, that, and I talk, I actually talked to our town attorney. He said, "What we could do if we don't get another quote in is we could, we have to, it has to be a super majority." So four of us would have to agree to approve whatever is there. So I guess my question is, are four of us comfortable with still trying to prove on the twenty-sixth if we can get another quote by then? Even if we, if we make our best effort and still can't get one other quote by then, are we still comfortable trying to do something?
And that's on the...
On, this is on this one, the ninety-one thousand?
Yeah, 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 I'll say yes, why not?
But, you know, like I said, if you send this out...
But on that, if you just go on the webpage, there's the, um, news items, the top news. It's still like, I think it's in those three, right? Yeah, yeah, so if you go to the webpage, top...
Right, and then when you redo, when you redo the other one, that'll, we'll put that out in like the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so you're not putting that out right now.
Okay, so the focus is this one, okay? I can drill up.
Yeah, so just go to the website, grab the link from there and you can send it out. That's how I've been sending it out. Okay, so we are going to move on to, oh, Director Bond, did you have anything else to add? I'm sorry.
Yes, um, just, Commissioner Ploir, uh, would you happen to have a contact or some of your old notes for, uh, CB3? Or do you know if they fall under another...
I probably do.
Because, um, my initial search is why you were, uh, talking about it, I, I couldn't find them.
I'll look when I get home.
All right, thank you. And I'll be sure to shoot that out to them and I'll take a look, uh, tomorrow morning as well.
Yeah, I, I'll see what I can find. I know, I, I have some from them. All right, for questions, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Right, election. The Board Supervisors of Election have met.
The mouse stopped working?
The mouse is not, it is now, so that's good. All right, so the Board Supervisors of Election have met and they have come up with a proposed election calendar for November.
Is it in our packet?
Yep.
It was right behind the Circuit Rider. I have it on thirty-sixth.
Page fifty-one.
Okay, yeah, I have it on there.
Page fifty-one in your packet.
Your pass where you just were, all the country.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, the Board Supervisors of Elections have decided they're going to have an elected, elected official information night on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth. It is prior to our regular town meeting. This is for any resident or any individual that would like to learn about how, what it is like to become an elected official in the town. Uh, they'll have an opportunity, hopefully you all come early that evening and have an opportunity to speak with, um, potential candidates to maybe decide they want to run for office. Um, it's like a, it's like a, kind of like a back-to-school night, but it's a back-to-school night for, uh, elected officials. So it'll be kind of fun, uh, to have them, you all guys, you know, people that are interested in running. So we'll start at six o'clock on the twenty-sixth. Um, absentee ballot application requests will start on Friday, October the sixth. Uh, candidate statements and signatures due. Your candidate statements would be due on Monday, October ninth. Because it is a federal holiday, uh, candidate packets must be like mailbox outside of town hall by midnight. Um, the absentee ballot distribution will start on Friday, October the thirteenth. The candidate forum, we will, are going to once again hold a candidate forum on Thursday, October the nineteenth. The deadline for voter registration count only would be October the twenty-eighth. And Election Day, of course, will be on Tuesday, November the seventh. Polls will open at eight AM until seven o'clock.
So, this was, they presented this to us. Do we have any comments, concerns?
And just so everyone is clear, it has been vetted by the town attorney. That has been brought forth to him, he has said that it's okay.
All righty then.
Thank you. You're gonna have a guard on the ballot box or on the mailbox from midnight?
Who's gonna be here to make sure they're all, it's something?
My thing is, there's cameras.
There are, there are cameras.
Cameras, we will have to look at cameras. They're on your post, and we would have to look.
I would hope so, too.
Candidate forum, seven, five, right?
Usually we'll start at one ten o'clock for the candidate forum. And we're trying to reach out to, um, legal women voters, oh, actually, the board of supervisors of elections is reaching out to legal women voters. We're working on that logistics right now, we don't know who the moderator will be, but that is the suggestion that I've been... All right, which is the town attorney, County of Marlboro Town Attorney, RFP. This is gonna be, um, put out, um, the RFP is for a twenty-four-month contract with the town, with the option of renewal beginning September first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, it is basically looking for qualified firms interested in providing legal services as the town attorney. Um, each applicant should have at least five years of more experience, and preferably experienced in small cities in counties of Maryland. And the deadline for this RFP would be on Friday, October the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three by five PM. And this, of course, would be put out on our normal course, we'll reach out to, um, we'll have it on social media, we'll put it on constant contact, we'll go ahead and put it out, you know, in certain areas, and of course, reach out to some...
Thank you. Questions, changes, comments? We'll vote on that on the twenty-fifth. So every two years, it, there, well, depends on the service, but most services, we bid out every two years, so it's timed. Like the trash and stuff, kind of, doesn't get bid out every two years, but, okay, all right. Administratorative update, um, you guys asked for a town administrator update, so they, the resumes came in. Um, they have sorted top five candidates, um, and...
Who'd they?
The H R F? So they, we asked them for top three, and they said these five people aren't really distinguishable to remove to. Um, so they are sending out, remember we talked about wanting them to send out like a preliminary survey to get some feedback from them and see? So they're doing that in the hopes that five becomes three, because, um, we also have internal candidates, um, we said we would interview our internal candidates. Seven hours of interviews seems like a lot. Um, so, so we're hoping to get down to a top three through this preliminary, um, process. So that's the update, uh, that resumes are being coded and then we can send them all out.
When do they expect to get them to the, because we're supposed to interview on Saturday?
We're hoping, this Saturday? No.
Oh.
We're, we have time held to do an inter, we, I've kinda blocked our calendars to see if we had time, next Monday, next Tuesday, and the twenty-third, Saturday. Because if we do wind up having, like, we're not gonna wanna sit for, you know, like a whole workday of interviews. So we may wanna do two on a Monday and four on a, depending on how many we have. So they're, I think they sent them out to them today, but I'll double check.
Tuesday evening, I'm not available.
Oh, okay, so, I'm gonna go directly into my calendar and cancel it. Forget it. Today, that is the nineteenth. I'm just gonna...
So we have Monday the eighteenth?
Monday, Monday the eighteenth and then Saturday the twenty-third. If, if it gets pushed back, we'll...
Saturday, the twenty-third is day, not night, right?
Day, yeah, yeah.
I had a cramp piece, I missed that.
Um, I wanna say...
Yeah, the twenty-third, I, I don't think I'm... Twenty-third and the thirtieth. Twenty-third is my momma's birthday.
Okay.
It's actually during the week, but I promise I was something of a week.
Okay, so let's look at the ca, let's look at our calendars, um... So we can, do the eighteenth if they can, if we have candidates to do that. What other days that week can we do?
I can do Wednesday, too. I can do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
So I can do Tuesday and Wednesday.
Well, Tuesday, well, you can't do Tuesday.
I can't do Tuesday.
Oh, right, sorry. So we can all do Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Can do Wednesday. What we'll have to do is either interview them in my office with staff room or kick a board game group out of.
Kick them out.
Okay. Um...
Monday the eighteenth and then Wednesday the twentieth?
Wednesday the twentieth.
These are in the evening, right?
They would be in the evening. How early can you guys start?
I can do six. I'll be pushing it, but I, I thought it'd work in like fifteen minutes.
Six o'clock, or, you guys, you guys aren't complaining, so I, six to, so we would be able to do two or three interviews depending on...
Yeah, I don't think we need to, um, have them sit here and, um...
I think it's like forty-five minutes per interview, because they're talking. Um, you wind up talking, there's five of us, right, and, so, but we'll see.
Thirty minutes.
So, um, oh, I need, all right, um, that'll give us three, the ability to interview six people if we do the Monday and the Wednesday. Then we can, do we have other dates? Let's do it Friday night, guys.
Nope, I'm traveling to New York.
I was just joking.
You can look, but nobody's gonna be there.
So, uh, we said six o'clock. Getting ready to send this to all y'all.
I think it'll work, that'll be on discount.
That's fine.
And you have a, a staff interviews?
Right, that's slightly problematic, um, um, but...
Town staff interview.
Yes, we, we'll do the sound, we will do a town staff interview, um...
No, that's what I'm putting, that's how I'm putting it on the calendar.
Oh, right, that's how you're putting it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm putting this, I'm sending this to all of you. Um, we were hoping to do them Friday. I don't think we're gonna be able to do them Friday. Um, but it's okay, I think it's okay if the town staff interviews are after, like, if the staff interviews the person after we've interviewed the person, then they can get, kinda give us that feedback. That's what a decision makes.
Why would we not have townspeople involved in this?
So wait, wait, before you get there, what did you just say?
I, I missed it.
So to, we were gonna have a town staff interview.
Interview the, the administrator?
The administrator as well. Kinda see, like, or maybe, not call it an interview, but kinda come in and see how they work, like, how you fit in with the culture of the staff is important.
That is true, that is important, but that's weird.
My husband does them all the time.
Does he does that?
When he interviews, like, he regularly interviews with his staff. For his, he, for his director level position.
You know, I've had an interview like that, where I had, it was two staff people on the, on the, on the panel. They made it weird.
They did, for me.
May not be for someone else, but they just made it weird for me.
Um, but why wouldn't we ask for, you know, residential participants? And, I mean, they're gonna deal with this stress just as much as anybody else.
Right, so I think it's gonna be on us to represent the residents. It is incredibly hard to pull together a resident board, they're volunteers, they don't have a lot of time. I don't think it's reasonable to do in the, you know, and get somebody in here in a timeframe, that they're not gonna get snatched from someone else, but I don't know what anyone else thinks.
But I think, I think, I think that's what we're here for. Five of us are here.
But our regular people who usually come, like, maybe join if they want, it gives them an opportunity if they want it to, but I don't think people are gonna show up, but if we, it's an opportunity. It's ultimately still, that's the board's decision.
I don't think, I don't think it makes sense for us, we, we are gonna have a closed session to interview, because we have to be able to ask certain things, so, um...
I don't care, it doesn't make sense. I, uh, time is up.
Okay, um, did you have any other administrative updates that came up in, in the afternoon? So we will move on to preliminary approval of next meeting agenda, which I think is just voting on everything we have here, right?
So items would be, A, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero seven complication would be board vote. B, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten property standards, sounds like a board discussion.
We'll see how much change the attorney makes.
Okay, very good. C, circuit rider would be board vote. D, Church Street parking lot proposal, board vote, if we have votes.
No, Church Street is actually just gonna be, well, we'll just change it to Church Street, RFP, board vote.
That's our campaign, got it. Spring Branch Drive, paving proposals, hopefully you have a backing, we'll do a board vote. Attorney RFP, board vote.
And we're gonna add the general government job description.
Yes, gotcha.
Um... Chief or Director Bond, do you guys have anything that might need to get added?
No.
Um, I just received the S H A three-year salt utilization agreement, but I'm, uh, not sure if that's something that's gonna have to go on the agenda, but I literally just received it.
So I'll, yeah, basically that's just, it's, S H A sends us an agreement, they tell us how much they're gonna charge us for salt and say, and how much we can have of it, and then we have to approve it, um, so if it's a...
Does it go to a government company or companies that don't make it?
The state, state highway administration. Um, but usually it's just a approval, Darnell, it's not really a lot we can, it's not really a lot we can do or negotiate.
There's no discussion there, they're telling us what they're gonna do.
What, do you, do you have to get it from them?
Director Bond, are there other sources? Can you use another source?
There are other sources, but they're likely more, well, they're definitely further from town and they're likely more expensive.
So that may be up for a vote without us having kinda seen it at a work session, but I think that generally does happen with it, because we have to turn around. But if it doesn't have to be voted on, we can give it enough cover, right?
Just for reference, the, the three closest salt domes are, two are owned by state highway, the other is owned by the county. Those are the three closest, uh, to town.
Well, uh, if you selected another vendor, they'll just have to bring the salt to you.
The, the thing about it is, we don't have the, yeah, we don't have the holding facility, uh, just the...
Oh, well then, okay, I see the, the problem now, so we, so we buy it and then they store it.
When it's snowing, the guys drive the trucks in the snow to go get them, so that's why we want the close one.
I understand now, no, and now that gives me a whole vision, that contact.
These are things you learn as a commissioner?
No, this is more contact.
I didn't know that before, but I've learned that.
I'm just like, huh, okay, well, let's get up out of here.
Okay, um, you're good, Darnell?
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Colbert?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Penauer?
Aye.
Bush and Terry?
Good night, all, good to all.
Thank you.
We did very good tonight.